Hello.
Good afternoon. My name is Raymond Skinner and I'm chairman of the DCHA stabilization and reform board, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is our regular monthly meeting of the District of Columbia Housing Authority. It's being held today, September 11th, 2024. This meeting is being held via WebEx video conferencing, and the board is here in person. Time is 1:01 PM. So at this time, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for personal reflection. And also, I'd like for us to remember those who lost their lives in the terrorist attack, which was 23 years ago today, September 11th, 2021. Thank you. So today is our regularly scheduled monthly meeting, and we invited members of the public to sign up to speak here on our website, those who would just like to view the meeting. So via the DCHA website linked to Facebook, via. Board of Commissioners welcomes input on matters of public concern. We offer you today an opportunity to express your interest during the public testimony portion of this meeting. However, we require that members of the public who attend our meetings abide by certain rules of decorum to allow the board to complete its business. During this virtual meeting, DCHA asks that you are may be muted until you are instructed to speak. Members of the public cannot engage in any disruptive, conductive, loud, threatening, or abusive language during the meetings. This includes any loud outbursts or shouting during times when you have not been invited to speak. Anyone who violates these rules will be removed from the virtual meeting. Serious or repeated violations of the rules may result in your being barred from speaking at future board meetings. But we do really appreciate your interest in the business before us today, and I want to thank you in advance for abiding by these terms. At this time, I'm going to ask for a roll call to determine if we have a bar.
Commissioner Denise Blackson?
Present.
Commissioner Rosa Burbridge?
Present.
Commissioner Leroy Clay?
Present.
Commissioner Jim Dickerson? Commissioner Dickerson, could you? Okay, I did, I did hear you mouth present.
Present. Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Ronnie Harris?
Present.
Present. Perfect. Thank you. We'll make sure we have you identified. Commissioner Katrina Jones? Commissioner Melissa Lee?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Chris Murphy?
Present.
Commissioner Jennifer Reed?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Teresa Silla?
Present.
And Chairman Raymond Skinner?
Here.
You have a floor.
Thank you. So at this time, commissioners, I'm going to ask that we consider minutes of previous meetings. We have two, uh, two minutes to review and approve. First, I'm going to take the July 10th, 2024 board meeting and ask, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? If they're not, can I have a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Let the minutes of the July 10th, 2024 board meeting stand as presented. Next, we'll take the August 6th, 2024 special board meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve?
Sure.
Second?
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let the minutes of the August 6th, 2024 special board meeting stand as presented. Thank you. Okay, next, I'm going to call on our executive director with the executive director.
It's been a while, right?
Yeah, we didn't meet, uh, I guess we didn't meet in August. So yeah, we did miss one meeting. So, so welcome back for the first, for the first meeting of the fall.
Right, right.
Uh, and we'll be going into our new fiscal year, October 1st.
Yeah, yeah. Can you leave us for 11 months? Geez.
Yeah, it started November 1st, 2020.
I got more, it's gray hair. I'm taking, so anyway, all right, we'll see everybody again. Um, I was going to touch on some highlights here, obviously, on operational side, talk about some things that we're doing on the personal side with our residents as well. Um, we had a lot of stuff done in August, and that time we had, um, for the big trade yard. I'll talk a bit about that later after the executive summary. We think of questions or some of the operations stuff. I just want to share some thoughts and insights that I've noticed over the past 11 months where we are, uh, given some of my experience in the past, but, um, just the high level for property management, obviously, we're covering around an eighty-three percent mark. I know, um, the denominator is still driving that, 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 that's great, but obviously we work with HUD, those units offline for a reason because, uh, there need to be substantial rehab at our Liverpool. Um, we did bring on 91 units in July, also put another 94, it came at the end of August, so you're going to start to see lease up numbers increase as we go forward. Obviously, we move these ups, people are trying to get out of leases worldwide and making arrangements to move. So you're not going to see it until probably the end of September, uh, when people are starting to move into new units and bringing online. Uh, according to the team, we're looking at breaking a hundred mark in the September, month of September. So, um, it's like harvest now, right? We had a down period of time because units took so long to do. But now that that time period has passed, you're going to start to see the numbers increase again, which is a good thing.
So we'll see our aggregate.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes. Um, so excited about that. On the voucher side of the house, uh, obviously, we have, we have about a thousand vouchers on the street now, which is a good thing to get those out because we can push it toward into here to get that utilization up. Um, we had a hundred new lease ups between, in the month of August, which is good. Uh, locators just started in August. We had a, uh, not a difficult time. We were trying to, we wanted to get them on sooner rather than later, but we had some snag regarding to how they were going to be brought on board, but they're on board now. Um, and so you should start to see, in addition to that hundred in August, you should start to see those numbers of lease ups increase in September as well now that they're on board. Uh, one of the things about, and having to be locators now is the fact that they're also helping the ACVP teach sort of identify bottlenecks, right? Perfect example, when they're reaching out, these people are calling them to say, hey, listen, it's my understanding of voucher, we're trying to help you lease it up. Uh, you know, whether it be a slowdown in, in, in the process of rafters or, or maybe backlog or inspections, they're helping us identify critical areas where we need to focus on and push through to make sure that we're getting efficient service in terms of trying to process these vouchers quickly. So.
So, so in terms of, so for the benefit of the public, I'd say, uh, who are the locators and what, what do they do?
So they're, they're like, they're, they're like real estate folks. They, they do real estate in the Martin, in the city, or done it in the city in the past. So they know the city well, and they know landlords and the buildings. So all they're trying to do is help people identify units that they can lease up. So for instance, and one of the things we noticed was, was like, listen, people were, you know, they were very picky about where they want to live. So first we asked them, now, it's okay, which quadrant of the city you want to live in? And then, then we'll, then they'll say, okay, well, you got four different locations in northeast, um, based on where you want to live. And so, hey, go check out these units. And that's sort of helping to sort of help them find places they can go and inquire about these stuff. So, so we're excited about the fact that they are on, I guess, again, one of the good things that came out is was they're starting to identify bottlenecks for us on the ACVP side of the house. So we want to clean that up as well as we go forward because staff is, uh, the ACVP staff's working really, really hard, but it's, it's, um, the, the, the walk-in numbers have increased tremendously since we set up 702. I mean, they had about sixteen hundred walk-ins in the month of August alone. So, you know, but, but that's good because now people can find us. Um, so, but, but again, sometimes the staff gets a little overwhelmed too. I've been that a rule. Um, and so it's good to have another set of eyes sort of on the outside looking in as to where we are, why the staff is trying to manage and process all of this paperwork and, and manage all these people that are coming in to see us, which is a really good thing. Um, so, so we're excited about, um, looking at the progress that hopefully we should be making with the locators on board now in terms of getting those vouchers leased up. So, um, on the resident services side, uh, we've been doing a lot of good work over the summer. Biggest piece of, uh, aside just various programs, uh, with, with a lot of the kids over the summer, um, including the camp that Easy Street did for us at Potomac Gardens. And obviously, uh, Darryl Green taking the kids out to Raisin Park, um, or, um, painting camp. Um, we've been doing these building community events, um, and they, and I'm huge here. And I, I just can't say enough about the fact that it's just good to see people be a part of a community again. And so, um, and I might speak about it later, um, but that was part of the whole plan too, was I tell people housing is more than bricks and mortar. It's about people, right? And we're, what we're doing now is we're bringing services to our residents through these programs, um, and, but also making them feel better about where they are and trying to rebuild this community. So, um, that's been a huge success, uh, for the summer. We have a certain more to do. Um, and so we're just excited about the fact that we're touching people now. So, uh, so that's been pretty good. I want, uh, turn to Nicole and give us an update on where we are with the kind of eleven hundred quarter.
Yes. Uh, so quick update.
So it's been, it's been two years, and will be two years in a couple of weeks when we first got to that successful. And, uh, you know, at the time HUD was saying, give us six months to, to May of 2023. And, uh, you know, in, in retrospect, in hindsight, uh, that was just totally unrealistic at the time, you know, we said, oh, let's say we got to do this, so we're going to try to do it. But it really was, uh, just, just totally unrealistic to be able to do that. So, uh, I'm hoping that we can pretty soon say that we have closed out all of these findings and, you know, can put a, a bow on it.
Yes, yes. We are hoping the same as well. So it appears that there was ninety total findings from the 22 report. Uh, prior to our arrival, it looked like fifty-six were with HUD either closed out or still under their review, waiting for that feedback. Um, so since we came in and they, we got an extension on the dates, we have submitted twenty-six, and we're in constant communication weekly, actually, with the HUD office, and it looks like all of those should be closed out. Now, not sure, we're waiting for feedback back. So that left eight remaining.
Should be closed out.
That's, it's, I'm done. It's done. So each week, we're, they say they're going to give us an update if each week goes by and we don't have an update yet. Uh, so it, with, that left eight that we did not submit, meaning we were waiting on admin and ACOB. So as we all know, um, admin, ACOB, we submitted one initially and we're waiting on feedback from HUD. So we couldn't be whatever. So that's the, um, the admin, talk through that. The ACOB meeting unfortunately was canceled. So that we need to provide to them, our responses. And once we get a response, we'll, we'll, as well, and either close them out or they're done, part of your recovery plan, just incorporate this. So.
ACOB, how are we doing with, um, some of the, the comments that we got from the public and advocates? Because we, you know, we got a lot of comments.
Yes, yes.
From some of the advocate.
Yes, I'm gonna throw that to Amy.
We have been, um, we've been meeting with the advocates monthly to, um, to discuss their comments and, uh, um, you know, hear a little bit more about them from their perspective and also to give them, you know, our feedback on whether we think we could accept or, you know, can't accept some of their comments. So, um, the, we've, I think we've had two of these meetings, but if, if they're advocates on, they can correct me if I'm, I apologize if I'm forgetting one. Um, but, you know, we, we, we do, we have a regular, regularly scheduled meeting on that, on that, on that side. Um, so, uh, and it's, 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 the, the discussions are, I mean, it's, it's, it's a bit slow going because I feel, you know, I think we have a lot to discuss. I'll be honest, but I think, hopefully, I think they're productive.
So I, I know the staff is, I think it's weekly now with HUD, and I've asked, asking for, over the last several months about getting something official, HUD stationary, and saying where we are with regard to closing out these findings. So hopefully, we can get something like that soon.
They told us they would do it. We keep asking every week, uh, and we're waiting. But they said to the three of us, well, we're willing to do it. We like working with you guys. You guys are doing a great job, but we still haven't seen it in writing. So we keep reminding her.
Okay.
But they're working on it, I think. So.
Yeah, so hopefully we should get it sooner rather than later.
So the good news HUD is working with us, making any threats about doing anything else. Right, right. Okay, at this point, all right.
I, I think, I'd like to say that they understand that we're working hard to clear and, you know, they're working hard to work with us, and I think.
Yeah, they acknowledge that part of it.
Right, yeah. And I know, they have staffing issues too. And we're not the only agency that are dealing with it. I know in northeast, in, in region three of HUD, there are a number of housing authorities that have, uh, major issues, problems out there. So, so I know we're not their only problem child, so to speak.
That's what, what I called my first oversight hearing. Um, Counselor Parker asked me about closing out the HUD report by May 31st. And I wasn't trying to be coy. I've worked with her for a long time. I kept saying, listen, that's the goal, right? And then he asked me, kid, he said, well, are you going to close off by the 31st? I said, Counselor, that's the goal. But in my mind, I'm saying, listen, sometimes HUD holds stuff up too, you know? So I'm not going to go in the record saying I'm going to close this thing out without HUD, you know? So, but yeah, now, now, I feel like when I go space with them, they, they see the work, being very cooperative and would be very responsive. So.
So before you go on, any questions from any of the commissioners about the, the numbers?
That's about another piece I want to share before we kick some, and I had numbers about the DHL stuff. I know Commissioner Murphy had reached out and asked for an update on DHS rapid rehousing.
Rapid rehousing.
Yeah, so, so.
Yeah, let's.
And Anton's going to share numbers, but we did meet with, uh, DHS and Directors Island on Monday in anticipation of somebody asking the question about where are we with rapid rehousing?
We're unpredictable.
They're right on cue, right? Chris Murphy pops up in the inbox. So, so, no, so, so, uh, Anton, you want to walk through the numbers of where we are?
Yes, sir. So that's, some of the challenges first, or just the numbers?
Yeah, no, go, go ahead. Yeah, because, yeah, we want, we want to get a sense of, you know, how the whole, uh, program is working.
Okay, great, great. So we've been meeting with DHS for, for a month to get applications processed, get the families over to outside. We have a few challenges that we work to help. There, there have a few, many challenges also. The biggest challenge we found so far, I mentioned earlier, is basically documentation. The families of DHSI have had years of not having to provide certifications, um, certain documents. And on our side, we have to, it requires copy of birth certificates, death certificate, marriage certificates, all of those documents. DHS is having some challenges with communicating families and of the, DHS unfortunately is right now is, is serving as a middleman because they have other service providers that they work with. So when we review applications with them, and we're meeting with them on a weekly basis, and we have missing documents, we ask DHS to get those documents. DHS in turn has to contact those agencies to contact the families. That's taking time. So as of now, as of today, actually, we actually have seventy-four of those families leased up who had completed applications, seventy-four. Seventy-four. We have six who are going to be reviewed tomorrow for their vouchers. Um, and just even though right now with my, my staff's actually, right now, working through a hundred and seventy-nine applications to review those applications for eligibility. However, uh, one seventy-eight, only fourteen were the complete. They provide training for DHS, uh, back in May, June, uh, to help families with the applications, and we're still seeing, seeing issues bird and over again. So we plan on conducting some more training for them. Um, a little softer because I'm not believing the families, because the families, again, have had a history of not having to provide certain documentations. So I'm holding more DHS and their partners responsible because they're not being, being astounded with families that say we need these documents. We started to help addressing these issues. We decided to have some clinics, some application clinics. And this is not going to be a event that we listen to by other House authorities. We have mass application sessions where we bring the families in, have families complete application with us right there. And that way, when we tell the families, we ask DHS, ask families, tell them for everything they have in the house. If it's a bill from 2010, bring, because I'd rather have more than less. And that would be a little bit missing. So we've had two of those sessions. We had a hundred families come in those two days. Um, it lasted from the 28th to 29th of August. Those two days, uh, we processed a hundred families, but still that base was completely, we only had about twenty-eight families. And we're still waiting for documentation to come back. So we tried to continue those sessions with DHS. We're waiting right now for DHS to schedule, um, the sessions again, planning some next week. Um, from our meetings, Director, Monday, DHS currently has five hundred applications that they received, five hundred, five hundred. And we're looking together, we're looking to sit with them, sit down at Virginia Williams to go through those applications to see if they're eligible. But again, we want to bring the families in, that's fine. We may have to do it three times a week now because it's the process being held up because families are not being given properly, well, seems to force feedback and that from us that they're not getting the proper information from the partners as to what documents are needed and why. So we're, we're working through some of the challenges, but we're, we're, we're getting through.
So, Anton, a couple of questions. Um, so just to be crystal clear on this, it's for families that were in the family FRSP or rapid housing house, that program doesn't have the same eligibility for documentation requirements that the federal program has. So that's, that's one of the, that's just to make sure I'm following it. The other question is, can someone remind me, we authorized, was it twelve or thirteen hundred vouchers, thirteen hundred vouchers for this? And I believe it had an expiration date. Was that the end of the calendar year?
June 25.
June of 25. Okay, okay. So just anticipating, sort of trying to think over the horizon. I guess the big question is, by the time we get to June of 25, are we still going to have these families in limbo?
I don't anticipate they will be because we're, we're being more aggressive on outside. And I know there are papers that are like this, but I'm a little bit more sympathetic to DHS. I'll speak to DHS, I don't know if they have capacity issue.
Yeah, I mean, it is unfortunate because this was not an unforeseeable issue. So there, you kind of wish that maybe they had gotten a head start on this.
Yeah, exactly. So we're working through some of the issues. Like, again, next week, we can have to, we may have to increase, um, the times we meet with them to do the clinics so we can get the families documentation. And we, and we want to, we're also utilizing our third-party vendor aleca to assist us also with reviewing the applications. So I think if we get to see some families face to face while we review applications, families can hear from us directly, we need a copy of your social security card and why. Because we, I can tell you all day long, I need a copy of your social security card. You say, okay. And again, the families are used to not having. Exactly. So we're going to tell them, tell them why also.
One of the questions I think we're asking, or we put it on the program, was how it's going to impact waitlist. How has it thus far?
So it's not impacting waitlist because we still have vouchers, and that is working with families, that kids working with, it's cool. It's not thirteen hundred is available, the vouchers are available. So it's not going to affect waitlist.
Anton, I, I don't think that's a fair characterization because one aspect of this is that we stopped, we pulled the nineteen, so that's the impact on the waitlist.
Okay, so I missed a question. Yeah, so that, that piece, to the thirteen hundred that we're, we're allocated for this program, yes, that's going to affect overall.
The last. But, but I think, I think it's really important to, to be clear about that. There are twenty thousand names we are not pulling because we have decided to allocate resources in this way. Those names are not moving. They stay on our waitlist.
So.
Wait. So we have a thousand vouchers on the street right now, looking on the federal side.
And that's in addition to these thirteen hundred that we are talking about. That's great news. Yes, thank you.
And also, um, some of the families in the rep, from DHS are from the current waitlist families. So it's still, those families, the waitlist number is based on.
Based on those, the overall.
Yes. Thank you.
I'll, I'd like to ask a question, if I may, uh, from this strange computer I'm behind. I'm not usually behind them. I'm there in the meeting. Sorry, I can't attend, but I just, it's probably been answered. Uh, but just in charge of, and how is the, uh, plan being, plans being developed for the, the families to, uh, transition out of, uh, the, uh, or is there plans for, for them to transition out of the rapid rehousing program? And, uh, with, you know, being able to move towards self-sufficiency, et cetera? So. Is there, or is it just right now, we're at the phase of just trying to get people in?
So on the federal side, we don't provide the supportive services that their DHS families are receiving now. However, if DHS is going to continue those services, they have to make them available to the family. We, as from the ACVP side, for the federal side, rather, we don't require that. During this process, this transitional process, uh, families, uh, moving from the DHS side to the housing choice, housing program side, um, the, it's being assisted with their housing search. So DHS has navigators. Once a family receives their voucher, they're assigned the housing navigators to help them find out, to help them get a house. So that piece is still going to continue. But once they receive the subsidy from us, and where they belong to our program, any services that DHS provides, they still can, but it's not required by the ACVP program.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners, uh, who are remote, or any questions? Take your edge. Okay, thank you.
I want to ask. Well, I was just going to say, I knew you had this question too. Uh, there was this landlord in the news this week, the, the attorney general filed for, um, and I, I believe that the, many of the vouchers that were referenced, uh, in the lawsuit were not our vouchers, but I do, we do the inspection.
I apologize for that. We don't really confirm publicly whether or not we have voucher holders in a, in a unit or not. I apologize for interrupting.
Voucher holders.
We, we don't, the, the, the information about whether a voucher participant lives in a unit is, is confidential. So I don't think we can talk about whether or not.
I, I don't think that's where I was.
Oh, I'm sorry then. Okay, did I apologize? I thought.
No, but if I, if I, if I missed.
I just wanted to go to you with that answer.
Okay. I mean, I think the question is, what can we say about the inspections? Uh, what, oh, let me ask, can we say something about the, the property owner at stake and what we might or be doing to, uh, double check our own systems to make sure that we feel like we're doing the right due diligence?
Yes, and I'm sorry, I, yeah, um, so yes.
Way to ask the question.
Yes, sorry. Can I, can I answer, Anton? So, yeah, no, I mean, um, upon learning of the lawsuit, we immediately checked our system to figure out whether or not we have participants in the unit. Um, our standard procedure when we learn about, you know, known issues that we may or may not have, you know, like this, would, would be to schedule a complaint inspection, um, which would be, uh, you know, an immediate inspection of the unit to determine if there are housing conditions issues that fail our standards. So that, that would be the, the standard process.
And we could do that across the board of the, of an owner. We could, that's, it would seem appropriate to.
Yeah, if, if we have a voucher participant in, you know, i- if we have a voucher participant in a unit, it is our right to be able to schedule inspections when we are aware of concerns.
Yeah, because I think we're sort of, it feels like we're on somewhat reasonable notice that there could be concerns, um, with properties owned by certain landlords and that we, we want to take advantage of those concerns to do what we can to make sure that we're taking care of our folks.
And, and, and I will just say, it's, you know, we, you know, periodically, there are public, uh, matters like this that, you know, that, that come out and, you know, and, you know, both with respect to, you know, this property and, you know, things that have happened in the past. That is what I've just described as our standard procedure, that we immediately figure out, do we have people living there? Because, you know, our biggest concern is protecting them, right? And making sure that they're living in the right, in acceptable. Because, you know, our biggest concern is protecting them, right? And making sure that they're living in the right, in acceptable conditions.
Thank you.
I have a question. Concerning what you just said, so for the public, for those who may be living on any property that is House of Choice voucher and they have complaint, what are they processed? And is there a deadline? Like I call, I tell you. What is the process? How will they get that taken care of?
So I will say, I'm going to ask Anton to give some specifics, but I will say shortly, you know, absolutely, if they have conditions that need, that they are concerned about, you know, we don't always know about them because we only do, you know, inspections on a, you know, annually or, but, you know, depending on. So, so yes, they absolutely should, please, please, please reach out, but I'm going to ask.
Yeah, we try to get out, out to a complaint inspection within 24 hours, see if it's app or participant calls to say, my bathroom is leaking and the floor is about to crack, get out there within 24 hours. And he said, those are complete inspections. And we, if the family has to move, we see vouchers to the families who move. You know, the reality is the family is not going to be moved immediately. He will be, he can assist them with that move to get them out. Oh, they called, I'm sorry. They called, they would contact their housing specialist or they could contact their, get for you the inspection hotline or they can email the inspection hotline to get that issue addressed.
But it's, but it's the responsibility of the landlord, the property owner.
Well, open the family, the family. The landlord is not going to call and say, oh, my unit's not, they want to make the corrections. Oh, yes.
I know the first I had reached out when residents reached out to me, I reached out to Mr. Waller and he connected them with whoever, Mr. Wayne.
The answer is, yes, the landlord is ultimately responsible for any repairs that are identified during the inspections. I think the challenge is if, if the unit is in a really bad condition, I think, you know, we would typically help this move because it's not, yeah. The ceiling and the floor, in your example, Anton, right, that would be something that we would, probably not easily or quickly repaired.
Okay.
Executive Director. So. Copy. So we're 11 months in. Had to get earlier.
We, we, we be.
Yeah. Yeah, 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 yeah. Sorry, I'm sorry. You guys are, you guys are like 20, 23 months in? I'm sorry, forgive me. I mean, that's difference to, you know, hey, you know, you got more security than I have. Yeah, but when I say we, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm beating the team, you know. I just wanted to sort of share some thoughts, right, about where we are. It's been a slow but fast year. Started to where we are now and. That's one, just one of the layers that the teams are working extremely hard. And I, I gotta continue to try to manage expectations because, you know, there is a three-year plan out there for a reason. And I've had to share that with even with some of the meetings that I have that, listen, you know, we're not going to solve a best problem immediately. But, but what I do see is because I've been in three, three turnaround projects, I have a different perspective, viewpoint on things and an assessment of how they're going. But I feel really good about where we are, given my experience, having been a part of turnaround projects before, just so you all know. And, and I'm, I'm starting to see the staff, they're working really hard, but they're starting to come around to the pace that we need and also just trying to, 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 to structure the work in a way that we can become more efficient, right? We're seeing a lot of people. The numbers alone on the walk-in, numbers are just, it's critical on the way because my main goal now is, what I shared with some of the applicants, what I met with them was, until we can refine and become more efficient, the main thing is to make ourselves available to people. And listen, we got, we're juggling a thousand plates every day. We're putting out fires all the time. And, and, you know, and I see it. And, you know, sometimes people get overwhelmed, particularly a lot of people have experienced it before. And I'm the only cat in the room that's experienced it, based on my team. So I see, I see it a little differently today. I tell them all the time, I said, one of my old bosses always told me, the view from the bridge is different than the view from the deck. They're all on the deck moving chairs around all day long, right? So they can't really see what I'm seeing. And, and, and I'm seeing success. And, and I wanted to say that out loud in the board meeting because I know some staff members, I'm a hard driver. But I can appreciate the fact that, you know, these cats are rolling, you know, and we're doing good work for people. I just wanted to say that for the record.
Questions? So, so I guess in terms of your team, particularly the executive team, you have all the players in place, you know, right? You still have some holes, you still have some holes to fill.
I talked about it off the alarm. Let's just say this, let's just say this. That, that's fluid for me, right? I mean, you know, and I may be frank, I've learned this a long time, but you kiss a lot of frogs in management. So, you know, so will there be some changes probably down the line? I'm almost certain it will be. But, but so far we're in good space and I think people are trying hard for the most part.
All right, any questions, commissioners online? Executive Director. Okay, thank you for that report. I think overall, it's, it's good news. I'm glad to hear some of the things that you're doing, the progress that you've definitely made. Most importantly, that you feel good about, about where we are. So thank you.
Even though some of the public don't think so because we have gotten to them, right? And the thing is, I call it the mad Russ syndrome, where everybody, once they realize, hey, they've been accountable, everybody running for the door and it's, take me, take me. And I'm like, listen, we can't take everybody right away, right? So for those we have got to forgive us, but.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, the next item on the agenda is resident testimony. And so for, for the non-residents who want to give testimony, what I'm going to do, since we only have a, a couple of non-residents, right after resident comments, I'm going to write, go right into the non-resident comments instead of. So I'm going to ask Anita to. Residents for Conference. So again, everyone has three minutes to talk about whatever issues you are concerned about, including if you want to make comments on some of the resolutions that have been before the agenda today. So with that, let's go ahead and start.
Perfect. Thanks, Chairman. First, we have former Commissioner Aquarius Vangosary. She's muted. And, and as a reminder, Commissioner, I see that you're speaking, you have to unmute yourself and if you're on a cellular device, star six. Perfect.
Okay, so let me say this. First of all, I want to know, these are some of the discussions that my constituents, that I'm being an activist for. Whether or not the union situation with the hostile employment work environment have that situation been remedied? And when is the resident council election? As we all know, it's overdue and we need a specific month, date and time. As a fact finder with Commissioner Watson, we already know that on September 11th, 2004, the housing authority sought out a third-party monitor. Now we need to know whether or not that monitor was, or have you selected a monitor? Because you're going to need a monitor before you have a resident council meeting. Now, we don't want to make the mistake of the past where you have qualified 18 and over residents who wants the opportunity to be voted on their executive board and they're misinformed because we already won on September. And last but least, this is my self-interest, being that I live in Potomac Gardens. What is the status of 700 and its rehabilitation program? Now, we know under Tyrone Garrett, there is no longer a R.A.D. So, and in the discussion of R.A.D. section 18, but we know that we're being renovated. So these things need to be in writing because residents are really getting lost. Furthermore, it is time for your board to come out of hiding and make arrangements to be on our properties. You already have that model. Now you can meet at Potomac Gardens, you can meet at Star of Tours, you can meet at 203 because you have residents that you are validating our rights because they are not computer literate to come online or be on the phone. So even if you are coming into the neighborhood two, four, six, three times out the year to really hear from real residents, your, your, your council let us come up to the city, district building and sit in the room. So stop being scared. Now, last but least, is the mayor going to extend her appointment with her board? Or will there be time for at least two public housing residents to be appointed by the mayor? Or will the two that we have, will they remain on the board until her term is up? We need to know some things like that. That's a lot I said, but I think you all comprehended very well. And at least Commissioner Reed, Commissioner Blackson and Commissioner Burbidge are three of you. Three of you know my compassion for resident councils and you violated my rights already as a resident by not having a resident council meet election in this October. I started thinking, y'all want to act like Trump? What's going on?
Thank you.
Serious because if you're a housing authority and you know that the backbone of this housing authority is an election. Now, Director Pedigree was not there when I fought with the citywide advisory board to still have a resident council election during COVID. You didn't have no problems allowing USDA and agricultural foods into your communities and your residents were standing in those lines during COVID to get the food, but we couldn't vote. Maybe if we would have not followed Trump model and followed Commissioner Von Gossreem model, which was Trump do not control this housing authority, we're going to have our election during COVID.
Van Gossreem, we.
We didn't. When are we going to have the election? When will the information be on everybody's door? So everybody would have the opportunity.
So next I have Rochelle Ellison. Ms. Ellison?
Yes, I'm here, I'm present. Good afternoon. I'm here because I wanted to let you know that I'm a person with 17 years lived experience of homelessness with co-occurring disorders. 16 years ago, I got a local voucher with an organization, Pathways to Housing DC. And as I grew and elevated in my journey and decided to get baseline and took the suggestions of the program and to get clean and sober, I can break my own anonymity. I sit here now before you, 10 years clean and sober. For the last four years, I've been advocating for the Moving On voucher, which is the Housing Choice voucher. I had no responses. I've been advocating since Ben Carson was the Secretary of HUD. And you guys brought Keith Pedigree and Anton Shaw to the floor. And I'm going to get emotional because they are the most amazing people that have done their job tirelessly, effortlessly, with passion, dedication. And the whole team has been amazing. And I'm not just saying, I'm an advocate. I'm the Assistant Director of People for Fairness Coalition. And I'm a speaker and advocate for the National Coalition for the Homeless. I fight for the rights of the unhoused population. I do peer mentoring. I sit at the cap table. I put people into the homeless management information system. So I'm all across the board, boots on the ground, helping people get housing that coming in behind me. But I got that federal voucher and not only did I, was I able to get my federal voucher and have my name taken off the list because it was time and someone dared to touch the waiting list. Today, I graduated from Pathways to Housing DC. I no longer am with an agency with wraparound services. And only with the dedication and passion and the hard work that they've done, was I able to reach these goals. And someone needs to shout them out and tell them how amazing of a job they're doing and how grateful we are as DC residents because we've never had a housing authority work this hard, this passionately for any members of the community of Washington DC, whether it be in public housing, local or federal vouchers. And I truly greatly appreciate you. You and your teams are doing an amazing job and I encourage you to keep working and keep just fighting the good fight because that's exactly what it is. I understand there's only so many resources that you're being given to work with and you're doing the best job you can. And I have had the honor of being connected and having rapport with these gentlemen and the DC Housing Authority. I was recently in your DC Housing Authority newsletter, that is me, Rochelle Ellison, who is Success Stories Housing First. So I came on today to speak just to say thank you for all the great work you're doing. And from me boots on the ground, if I can be of any assistance, I'd happy to be able to build a rapport with the rest of the team at DC Housing Authority. One thing I want to leave you with, as I know DC Housing Authority doesn't have a person of lived experience actually there. And I would like the board to consider creating a position for a person with lived experience, whether it be me or someone else, someone that's passionate as Director Pedigree, Director Shaw. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. I want to say you're, you're an example of what we need to follow, Ms. Ellison, and what we need to build upon. And we need you to help us do that, that people have potential and they, with the right kind of support and their own determination and decisions, they can move forward in their lives and do things that they never thought they could. And you're a living example of that and that's what we're all about. So I hope that you can stay close to us and, and be, you know, in this with us as we, as we are now keep trying to turn the corner for a new day here. So thank you for your life and your witness and all that you have accomplishing and how, what, how it affects other people like you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your comments and I just want to be able to inspire and give others hope that this is possible. I went from literally sleeping on the streets to being where I am today and I'm still growing, I'm still learning and I'm still teachable and humble. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Katrina Johnson. Katrina Johnson, are you on the line? I'll move forward. Next we have Jamea Thurman. Jamea Thurman. Moving forward. Regina Rivers. And once again, as a reminder, if you're on a mobile device, star six to unmute yourself. Regina Rivers. Moving forward. Tawana Kearns. Tawana Kearns. Next we have LaShawn Carey.
Yes.
Ms. Carey, you have three minutes.
Yes, back in August of last year, y'all sent me a letter stating that I reached the top of the waiting list. Within some weeks later, y'all sent me some papers back stating that I didn't sign. Okay, moving forward. January of this year, y'all sent me a second letter. It said everything had to be turned in by, by February 13th. I turned everything on June, June 6th, got a receipt from, I believe it was 625 or 725 D Street. He, he stepped my paper. I informed him that the area manager was out of town and my paper wouldn't be signed. I was told I had nothing to worry about. Boom, fast forward. Y'all, I'm reaching out because at the same time of me dropping my paperwork off, I dropped my cousin's paperwork off. She has her briefing, everything. I've been reaching out to y'all. No one is returning my call. Finally, someone returned my call back in May, from February to May 13th, telling me that he was going to reach out to me. That was on a Monday. He was going to reach out to me on that Thursday and let me know what was going on with my voucher. Never heard anything back until yesterday when I received an email stating my briefing is coming up. I've already accepted a voucher somewhere else. That was unprofessional what they did to me. I reached out every day from February until I got a lawyer to come and fight. That's the only reason I'm here. I'm owed an apology. I've been in DC all my life. I shouldn't have to move out of state because y'all failed to do y'all job. That's unprofessional. I want everyone, I need an apology from everyone who worked on my case. I owed her no money and it's not my fault that she didn't sign off on a good letter. That's a housing situation. It's an inside thing. I never, the, the voucher I have now, just accept it. They didn't even ask me for a good letter. That's something they can go into the system and get theirself. I'm owed an apology, real bad. Here from February until now, yesterday, y'all want to give me a briefing. I sent a letter out every month to Mr. AK Shaw. He's not responding. Everybody start responding. No one will respond back to a text or call back. I called y'all from February until I got that lawyer. Y'all just called me back. Today's the first day I actually heard someone voice, this Mr. Matt told me he was going to give me a call on that Thursday, which was that Monday. He never even returned. I haven't heard from him since. I have his personal, he gave me his personal number. I've been calling, contacting him, no one still until yesterday. When y'all knew I was coming, he gonna tell me about a briefing. I've been a DC resident all my life. Now I gotta move out of my jurisdiction, far away, hour away from my job, just because y'all failed to do y'all job.
So I would like to apologize if we have been derelict in our duties and not done our job. And now, the board doesn't do this, this is another person have been apologized for that. Who do we need to have her talk to here with us now? That would, you know, directly work with her on this?
My lawyer is working on it. That's why I'm in this meeting. I had to go to Brad for the city to get a lawyer. This was in February. No one has reached out to me until yesterday. They sent me an email talking about a briefing. I already went through a briefing with a whole another jurisdiction. I shouldn't have to go through this.
No, you shouldn't.
Unacceptable.
It is, and we need to correct.
They want to snack on their job, so I'm one part to get, I got a list of names my lawyer can send it to y'all. Everyone who promised me, want to call me back, and then they were supervisors. They said he just got one, just got higher, he'll be giving me. No one never called me back. I even got emails from the DC Housing applicant, but they told me to send my stuff.
So Ms. Carey, thank you for giving us your, providing your testimony today. And as you stated, you do have an attorney, so we'll have our OTC department work with your attorney to follow up with you. Moving forward, we have next, former Commissioner Kenneth Council. Former Commissioner Kenneth Council, are you on the line? Star six to unmute if you're on a cell device. Moving forward. Next, we have Shawta High.
Hello. 1 Peter, chapter three, verse 12. For those, for the eyes of the Lord are on the righteous, and his ears are open to their prayer. But the face of the Lord is against those who do evil. Greetings to all. I'm Ms. Shawta High, Warrior Woman of God, a mother, advocate, and community leader. It has been precisely one year since I asked, how can you take your HCVP voucher and transfer it or port it to other states? Mr. Raymond Skinner, the BOC chairman stated, quote, "We'll follow up with you, Ms. High," end quote. Yet, three hundred and sixty-five days later, there hasn't been a phone call, email, or any type of information given to me, although this question was posed by both non-residents of Park Morton and Park Morton residents alike. This is a query that keeps arising, because people feel that I can get an answer despite the lack of care, detail, and the incompetence of DCHA. Another question that is being asked by many is, why aren't the voucher specialists responding to the recipients? On occasions with the permission of the individual, I'll call someone who can be a witness to that person's situation so that they can hear the distress of the call that the caller was in. Here, here we are now, and it is my turn to contact the HCVP VS or voucher specialist, to which I was informed via a letter stating that Devon Queen was my specialist. However, when I called DCHA to speak to Devon Queen, I was told that Maurice Holton is my voucher specialist. After being told this, I called twice a week for the past month, trying to reach Mr. Holton with no success. I have emailed Mr. Holton, and I have, I haven't received a response. I can say with all certainty that the information was given to me by others is indeed a fact, because I am now living it. I must also express my disappointment regarding the DCHA ED, Mr. Pettigrew. Upon his arrival in 2023, he uttered the words, "I'm here for the residents." And his actions have reflected the opposite of those words he has spoken, at least to Park Morton residents. He previously stated that Park Morton, at the Park Morton Chatten Two events in October and December of 2023 and other meetings, I quote, "I plan to keep all of the resident councils intact, regardless if people have to move due to redevelopment, because I believe people should have representation," end quote. Mr. Pettigrew has not abided by those words, as he announced, he announced, excuse me. Despite seeing that many of my residents still support me, he backpedaled on the words that, "And, and that, that doesn't stand well with me. Trust is earned and not freely given, since these encounters, Mr. Pettigrew has neglected to stay in contact. And that is okay, because God has a bigger plan. After taking such needed, much-needed respite, after seven years of nonstop Board of Commissioners meetings, meetings with congressional and DC City Council members, meetings and events with residents and more, I'm well-equipped and ready for what is to be. Au revoir, les gens."
Next, we have Atreese Belt.
Will I get to speak today?
Next, we have. Moving forward. Next, we have Patricia Malloy.
Good afternoon. My name is Patricia Malloy, former Resident Council President of Lincoln Heights, relocated to the Strand residency under the New Communist Initiative. The biggest issue in DCHA's three-year recovery plan that affects residents is a plan converts the subsidy from traditional public housing to project-based Section Eight. During the Board of Commissioners meeting in June of 2024, the Star Board approved to submit Section 18 application to demolition, demo disposition to HUD for six properties. By changing to Section Eight, it will bring in more money to the agency to reinvest into the properties. The agency have not explained on how these changes will affect residents. How has the changes been communicated to the DCHA properties? Many residents are not aware of the three-year recovery plan. How will this plan financially impact public housing residents? This needs to be made really clear in writing. Will they have to pay electric, gas, water? More discussions and information need to be done with residents that live on properties, not just resident councils or advisory board. Five or 10 people cannot make decisions on entire property or agency. Want to issue this important? Are there any checks and balances in place to show that residents were informed? Were there mailings sent out? Were there suggestion boxes put in the rental offices for questions or comments? If so, what department was in charge to oversee collecting information? Can I get my questions answered within fourteen working days in writing, please? It's very disturbing when you can't even get an answer. And I noticed one of the commissioners, they're taking time to answer people's questions, but we cannot get questions answered. I am also a pro, at the Strand, twenty-six of our units are project-based vouchers. Are you all aware that it's really a hardship, because we have to pay electric and we have to pay water? Not only that, as a project-based unit, I was very disturbed to find out that, for the three years I've been here, I never knew who my specialist was. Three years. I was very, we do not get any information with any changes dealing with DCHA. We are still part of the Housing Authority, even though we're project-based voucher. But I feel, and the twenty-five, twenty-six residents is here at the Strand that was relocated from Lincoln Heights, we never get information. And people seem to, and I need a verification. This morning, I received a phone call from the voucher. And I was told that I was not, every three years, I'm to be recertified. I never got that in writing. When we were relocated here, we were told every two years. When you change policy and procedure, we as voucher holders, project-based or whatever, we need to get information as well. Don't leave us out, please.
Thank you. Next, we're going to move on to Linda Brown. Linda Brown. Moving forward. Next, we're moving on to Sandra Banks. Sandra Banks. Moving forward. Next, we're moving to Vivian Mercer. Ms. Mercer, you can go ahead and unmute yourself and provide your testimony.
Hi, good afternoon. Can you all see me?
Yes, we can. Good afternoon.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me and allowing me this opportunity or this time to speak about my issues. I am a resident of Hassan Ridge Townhomes, and I've been here for about five years. My issues are with the black mold that's in my unit and upgrading from an in-house voucher to a Section Eight voucher. The mold that's in my unit was first discovered in 2021. I didn't know what it was. I was just having trouble breathing in my bedroom until someone came out doing inspection, and we found all the black mold in the window seals with the mushrooms and all of that stuff. I've never seen it before, but I was told that's what it was. After, so after that happened, they brought this huge machine to put in the floor of my place, which was supposed to, I guess, clear the air or whatever, but that didn't help. Ever since then, when we discovered the mold in the window seals, they've sent people out here to treat it or clean it up, and it is resurfacing every year in the same spots. So I'm thinking the mold is in the walls somewhere, because it's lying dormant and resurfacing every year in the same spots. So there have been two or three failed inspections here in my unit. I keep asking to be moved, and they're telling me, since I have an in-house voucher, I can only move within the complex, and they don't have anything available for me to move. So I'm still here dealing with the mold issues. So I just wanted to know, what will it take for me to move out of this place or get a safe and comfortable place to live? I would like the same accommodations, because I actually love the place. It's convenient to everything, the stores, subway, and the bus. And I have parking right where I live. I can walk to my house, because I'm also a diabetic, and sometimes my arthritis gives out, my legs gives out. So it's a nice place, but it's just, I have trouble breathing in here, and I just don't know what to do. So any suggestions?
We'll have somebody follow up with you. We have your contact information.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have, we're going back to former Commissioner Ken Council. I understand that you have technology issues. Former Commissioner Ken Council, are you able to unmute yourself at this time?
Yes, can you hear me?
You can, you have three minutes.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. It's been two months that I've asked the Board of Commissioners to explain to me recovery plan, why audit and compliance are not added in there. Things that I'm hearing today, I see nothing has changed. Audit, put this in place, so have the city council, put that department in place. Yes, it's no secret, I was over that. When I looked at in the table of contents, it was not there. I'm going to ask Councilman Robert White to look into this, because this is crazy. That is an important part and component. On the twenty-second of last month, every department was in front of presidents to presidents, and each department said they were contracting out, and nothing's being done. Four landscapers that you all have hired, there's no quality control in place. They're doing a poor job, but I'm quite sure the invoices are being paid. For what reason? Quality assurance need to be put back in place. The lady that spoke before me, that's just one mold problem. You all have thousands of mold issues, and you're slowly fixing it. You can hear in that woman's voice that she can barely breathe. There's a difference between salt and sugar. It's the taste that you will know, because both look alike. Have a great day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Paulette Matthews. Paulette Matthews, I see that you're on. Star six to unmute yourself. Moving forward. Next, we have Davion White. Oh, I'm sorry, Paulette Matthews. I see that you unmuted yourself. You want to go ahead? Okay, I'll come back. Davion White.
Hear me?
Hello? I can.
Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Please.
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Matthews.
The lines are crossed. There, the lines are crossed. There's someone else talking, and when everybody else is talking, I guess when they're dropping off or whatever, you hear dial tone. So there are some issues going on, but I keep saying, can you hear me? And then it drops out.
Ms. Matthews, we can. Fine, now you can go.
Thank you, thank you. I'm going to start speaking now. How y'all doing? Sorry to come off so abrupt, but I've been patiently waiting, and then at that moment, there goes everything. So when I actually came online, I heard people speaking about inspections and vouchers. And that was one of the topics I want to talk about. But first, I want to say thank you to the DC Housing Authority team and to Mr. Pettigrew and to all of those who are assisting us out here. And the fact that, you know, I'm never, where you can see my camera, because that's not really important. But I really would like for us to start getting into these rooms, because COVID is over. So I'm going to say hi to all the board members and also to something strange but real, to Aquarius and Ms. Hive and Atreese Belt, people that I haven't seen in a while, but we have been out here doing what we do, because we have to, just like y'all do. So it's just the fact that even where I'm at right now presently, prior to me moving in, I think the last process of it all, definitely don't know the process for sure, but it's the inspectors. And at that point, then, I guess we can move in. Well, when I did my walkthrough here, I had noticed that my kitchen floor was weak. And hello?
Still hear you.
Okay, because I keep hearing a lot. Y'all might not hear what I hear, but so with that being said, now I'm getting ready to move out to a unit or whatever, so that they can come in and tear out my kitchen floor, which I said when I walked. which I said when I walked in, I felt it that this floor spot, something is wrong. It's a cover-up, bad nature, whatever. So I moved here in two thousand and eighteen. So in coming here by two thousand and twenty, all of the other residents, because I advocate for housing that live in my community, were showing me their stuff, which is, I mean, when I say bad, bad. So we're at that phase now that these things are getting done. But at the same time, my son had been on the housing authority list for some time. He was supposed to have, he brought in his um, deposit, I'm gonna say six months ago, but y'all can check your own records. And he was going to move on W Street in the apartment. Um, I guess they call them the walk-ups or whatever. And in that process, it was a thing of hurry up and wait. Oh, finally they called me because he lives in a shelter. Finally they called me, but now I gotta wait. I'm still in this shelter. I done gave them my deposit. I'm still waiting. In the midst of him waiting, um, that he wound up getting a voucher. And so in doing that, he was able to go out and look. And it's this thing about this inspector part that I'm a little puzzled by because at this time that he has a voucher, there's a whole lot of other things going on. And there's somebody by the name of Ms. Reeves that's um, dealing with his situation. But I'm trying to figure out why all these processes take so long for people. And when you're living in a shelter and you're working and you keep getting this runaround or you might have to come to the housing authority to do X, Y, Z, Z, Y, X and still hurry up and wait. Why is that so? And how can that be corrected? Because that has been going on for some time now. And it's time to make a whole lot of business in what we're used to doing or people use like the mold situation and all of that. We still on the phones talking to y'all when our residents want to get to see who y'all are. I mean, just, it's, it's a different field and it's time not only for us to have the opportunity to um, get on here and state our concerns and get things done. There's a whole host of people other than ourselves who are on here, not just maybe talking about our problems, but other people's problems. But this is a history and it needs to be um, broken. And, and, and I don't even know if the inspector's supposed to be the last one. I want to ask the question, who checks behind the inspectors? Because I also found.
Next we're moving on to, um, we're going to go back to Davion.
I don't mean to be rude.
Davion White, can you please unmute yourself? Star six, you have three minutes.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Can.
Go ahead. Okay, good afternoon, um, to all. First, let me say, I live in that avenue, on Georgia Avenue. And there's a lot of things that's going on within this building. One, we don't have a property manager because our building is in the middle of top. Okay, uh, there's a lot of things that has to be done in the building. We have no one here to go to. Concrete, they have two people going in there that does not have access to do what a property manager would do. That's one. Two is, we're having a lot of problems with the Lytec, this being a Lytec building. A lot of the residents here does not understand what that mean. Meaning uh, the calculation of their rent, how is their rent and calculated things to that nature. I have reached out uh, to the housing authority uh, to kind of get some more definitive answer. I've gotten answers, but not to the standards of the residents and my board. Okay, um, I would just like to get someone to explain um, to me if you can't do all of the residential, the board here, uh, exactly how that works. Because it's hard getting through to.
Ms. White, this is Nicole Wickliff, Deputy Executive Director. The Avenue DCHA doesn't have ownership in, but we will circle back to you to try to get a contact over there to make sure that they, they contact you.
Say that again.
The housing authority doesn't have any ownership in the avenue, but we will, we may have contacts over there that will reach out and ensure that they call you or someone speaks with you to um, first of all, hear your concerns and explain the Lytec program and calculations to you.
Okay, and your name is what again?
Cole Wickliff.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you so much.
Next we're moving on to Donna Towns. Donna Towns.
I didn't make a statement. This is Ms. Matthews. I had a que.
Next, moving on to Patricia Bishop.
Good afternoon. Welcome back. I want to speak first on the resolution of twenty-four forty-five, the contract for online maintenance and repair service. I appreciate this being on the agenda. I like for it to pass, but I also would like for all the uh, work orders to be bottled up with each president and manager on the property that these work orders that will come on call for the repair services be notified to all commissioners also. Because uh, I noticed in the press, in the past, that these problems had occurred over and over with just the patchwork or somebody will get back to you when we get the supplies or whatever uh, in that situation of preparing for a better home. Okay, I'm finished with that one. The next thing is about Greenleaf. I appreciate each and every one of y'all that works closely with me and making sure that these things that I asked for be taken care of within a decent amount of time. And all that has not, I understand that everybody is busy doing um, the jobs that they are hired to do. And when I reach out, I do get information to bring back to my tenants about what is the holdup, what is going on, whether it's an email. And I appreciate each and every one of y'all for the outstanding job y'all do. And please, not only just do it for good trouble, do it for all these presidents and the tenants on this prop, on these properties, the public houses that y'all represent. Thank you and I'm finished.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop.
Next we have Wanda Davis.
Good afternoon. My name is Wanda Davis and I'm calling from the Montana property. And the purpose of my call is about what several of the other people have spoke about as far as the voucher inspection. But my thing of it is, is the voucher part is that two years ago, I put in for the Providence. And they tell me that I would be notified within about two weeks. Here it is, two years later, and I haven't heard anything from anybody. I've been reaching out to Tiffany Broadnet, also recently reached out to Paula Hernandez. And Paula Hernandez reached out to Tiffany Broadnet and said that she will be giving me a call. Six weeks later, almost seven weeks, I received a call. And um, and a, well, a text apologizing for my patience. Now, you, I have the application, the paperwork and everything that I filled out, so they give you a copy of it. And I still haven't heard anything. And I live in a, up here in a four-bedroom unit, which I am the only one here because all my grandchildren have moved out. I don't want to go to another bad property, leave one where from one bad property to another, which they tried to do because of the flooding that they had up here. I live in a very nice unit and they know that I do. Everybody that comes through here, tell me I need to give classes on housekeeping because that's how clean my house is, but water has destroyed some things up here. But nobody has wanted to replace my area rug, which I don't have rugs down here anymore because of the sewer package. Now that they've gotten it finally, after all these years, they've gotten it under control. I've been living up here for eleven years come October the first. And the day I moved in till now, nothing has changed. You don't see housing police? The same activity is sun up to sundown. And it's ridiculous, the trash. I don't put near ounce of trash out there, but I have to go and pick it up. The vacant houses sometimes, the grass is grown all the way to your knees. And it takes them a long time to come around and get that you got rats running around here, but nobody wants to do anything. Then you want to give me somewhere to live, but I think that I should be able to live somewhere nice. I have everything adequate in this house, washer, dryer. I have a lot of things I have gotten rid of because of the Malvo that y'all said that y'all were putting in place and that hasn't taken place yet. Where we were going to relocate, some people come back, but I wouldn't be able to come back because I need a one-bedroom. All I want is something nice to live in and have a bedroom, not nothing where it's just all space. I'm not trying to be, sound like I'm being ungrateful, but I think that I deserve this. Go, if you put these people in some of these nice places and what they do, go back six months and look at how they're keeping their housekeeping up. It's terrible. You don't even have to go in. You can look from outside to see. And I feel as though I deserve a fair chance. You gave me something, but you never did, you, you gave me something to get, but I didn't get it. Now you don't have the paperwork and you can't find that because I called. So I want to know what you're going to do about it. I don't want to go in no trashy place, but that's not how I live.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Davis.
Thank you, but what are you going to do about it?
So let's, yeah, Ms. Davis, someone is going to reach out to you. All these testimonies, we definitely follow up on everyone's concerns.
I hope so. Thank you very much.
Next, we're moving on to India Blocker. India Blocker. Star six.
Yeah, I'm here. I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Ms. Block. You have three minutes. Hello?
Okay, good afternoon. My name is India Blocker. Um, I'm from the Woodland community. At first I just want to say thank you um, to Mr. Andre and Ms. Monique um, for all that they have been doing with us. Um, it's been a long time coming since housing has really got with us and actually showed um, community love. You know what I'm saying? Um, I really appreciate it. We also appreciate having Dante Cotton on the property. He has been a great manager. He comes out, he interacts with um, the residents, um, he gets things done. It's really, really like encouraging um, for the people just to do better, you know, for itself. Um, also, we had a class to graduate last Friday from the community center with a job readiness program, which D O E S funded for me. Um, we paid the kids, not the kids, but we paid the young adults forty-two dollars per hour. Um, they graduated. Some of them went on interviews today. They actually got jobs. They're working. Um, it's just been an amazing one. And I, I just would like to thank, you know, housing, um, just for stepping up to the plate right now. But I have one concern. The concern is housing authority. Um, we have an officer on our property. He has no respect for the residents. Um, his approach is really, um, it's off. Um, and I just think that he is not for the community. So we're going to do a petition to get him off our property because we, we can't do it. We can't, we can't do it with him. Um, another thing I just will ask is how can we just support us more, uh, come to our events? Um, have more of us in the community, just to engage with the residents, just to let them know that, you know, we are everyone and we are not apart. Um, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Block.
Next we're moving on to Michael Cornege. Michael Cornege.
So, so we're now going to non-residents, but again, you got to keep one, uh, if you have three minutes to provide your testimony.
Hello? Hello?
Ms. Towns, how are you?
I'm fine, and yourself?
We called your name, but I can give you your three minutes.
Oh, um, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Donna Towns and I'm a Park Morton resident. Um, I'm here to testify today to um, bring to attention of um, Director Pedigree. On the last time we spoke, he was, he stated that um, Park Morton was going to have um, um, management would accept our rently, uh, monthly rent payments each month. Um, well, that has not been happening. I go, I wait and I go down to the office, no one's there. And I would prefer to give them my payment because I've been having issues with my payments getting on my account. And um, so I just want to bring attention to that, 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 that newly proposed delivery to Park Morton Management Office to get a dated receipt is not happening. And I'm very concerned about that because I need to see what my ledger, how, how my payments are getting sent to my um, account. And also, um, I've had a conversation with Mr. Campbell and um, he says that he wants to give me a project-based voucher. I'm not interested in a project-based voucher. I would like to receive a tenant-based voucher, just as prior Park, Park Morton managers have received for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-one and all of that, on, during that time period. Because I'm kind of reluctant to move it over to Park, to the new complex based on all that I've gone through as Park Morton residents, a resident. So I would like to request a tenant-based voucher. And also, I would like to do a follow-up on the um, the on-floor eviction room of my six twenty, apartment twenty-one. Apartment, I would like to do a follow-up on that. So basically, that's all I wanted to speak up, speak upon today. And I hope that the management at Park Morton does better with receiving our, our, receiving my monthly rent payments. Okay, okay, thank you. I look forward to hearing from you. Okay, bye-bye. Thank you.
Next we have Coria Evans.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can, Ms. Evans, you have three minutes.
Okay, hi. I first want to uh, thank everyone for inviting me to speak. I have been on the waiting list since September eighth, twenty-eleven for public housing and the voucher program. And um, received the invitation uh, for Friday, January sixth, twenty twenty-three to attend the big event at um, the Martin Luther King Library. And with that uh, invitation came a checklist of documents that I needed to bring. Um, I was going online to get the application, but I had everything that I needed and I went, it was a long process. I was there almost all day. And um, they said that someone will reach out to me within thirty days. I left and I said, okay. I received the call, um, telling me to come to eleven seventy twelfth street northwest um, to complete, th- this was January the eighteenth of twenty twenty-three, complete my zero income paperwork and I did that. And I heard nothing else. And then I received another invitation several months later, May twenty twenty-three. I noticed to come to the public housing event. On May first. And so I was like, okay, I did this in January. So I went back to eleven seventy twelfth street with the notes. And I told them, I said, well, I, I went to the library in January. I completed all the paperwork. It was a process. And um, I came here to fill out my zero income paperwork. Another invitation and she said, oh, no, no, you, you won't have to go. That was. Another invitation. And she said, oh, no, no, you won't have to go. That was a mistake. And I will let someone know upstairs. I don't know what happened, but I've never heard anything. But with my brother, because we went the same day, he's gotten his voucher. But when he told me, I was like, well, I never heard anything from anybody. So he was giving me his resources. And I'm calling these people. So I said, no, let me just call Housing Authority back. And I started in mid to late July, and I couldn't get through. So I went online to book an appointment. It says you have to book an appointment, and I did. But I didn't see anything for public housing, but I saw something for the voucher. So I booked that appointment. I said, well, maybe when I get there, they can help me with both things. And I got an appointment for August fourteenth. And I went to seven oh two H Street. And there was a line and the waiting room was full. And I said, well, I have confirmation that my appointment is at eleven thirty. I got there eleven fifteen. And so when I went up to the front desk, when it was my turn to check in, and I showed her my confirmation. And she said, well, you know, have a seat, find a seat. They had some kind of disruption there. And I went back to the desk and I said, well, you know, I have an appointment. She said, well, we have walk-ins, and so we have to see everyone. So I'm like, okay, what's the point of making an appointment if you have to wait an hour to be seen? But I waited. And a young lady by the name of Ms. Paz Gutierrez, she helped me because I was only doing a status check. So she said, my name was, she looked at the system. She said, my name was removed from the public housing. Listen, she couldn't tell me why, but she said, you're still on the waiting list for your voucher, Housing Choice voucher. I said, okay. So I said, well, can you refer me to somebody? Because I need to, I say, is the building still open at eleven seventy twelfth Street? And she said, no, they have a new location. So she did. She referred me to a she gave her phone number and her email. And that day, I called Ms. Broadnax. I left her a message. She called me right back within an hour or so, and she gave me an appointment to come and see her.
So Ms. Evans, I don't need to interrupt you, but we have most testimony. We are going to have someone follow up with you to make sure that we kind of solve your concerns.
Okay, but someone did follow up.
Okay.
Desk.
Okay.
Who was scheduling me for this hearing, right? She called me Monday and gave me the information. But then she had Ms. Rudd to reach out to me. Ms. Rudd reached out to me. Gave me two locations, but I feel like it was rushed all because I know I was doing this hearing. So.
Want you to continue feeling rushed, but let us call you back and spend some dedicated time with you to resolve the concerns. Okay?
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Next, we have Chapelle Wilson. Chapelle Wilson.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
So first, I'd like to thank the board and the commissioners, past and present commissioners, and I definitely appreciate the time that you guys have created for channel, for feedback and access to you. So my name is C.D. Wilson, and I'm a small business owner, D.C. landlord, and I've been so for over two and a half decades in the Columbia Heights, Leedroy Park, and Hillcrest areas. The first of three experiences I'd like to please share with you is one where I believe that access or landlord access to some sort of portal for requests of wraparound services for Housing Choice voucher participants would be something that would be useful and may help with some of the backlog that some of the on-the-ground workers and specialists have to face. I have one tenant who currently suffers from the disease of alcohol abuse and struggles from the lack of knowledge. And what I think or believe in executing adult life functions like writing checks, filling out money orders. Made personal phone calls to me, very drunk and belligerent in the wee hours of the morning. She's made physical threats to other neighbors and tenants. She doesn't have a phone. And so, you know, I stopped by from time to time to do winter checks on her. And I do share this with you, not from a point of me looking to have something removed from her by way of her voucher and her ability to have housing, but just really my concern for her own safety and being able to initiate some sort of concern where she's getting help for her alcoholism. And I think just as a landlord, possible access to create that where a concern is documented and there is follow-up directly with the participant, I think would be something I'd like to ask the board to consider. The second experience I'd like to share with you is with the Rapid Rehousing Program via the Washington Urban League. I currently have a tenant who made one of my units that is unable to pay rent since funding was pulled in June. She's currently in arrears to the tune of twelve thousand dollars. That has been a true financial hardship on me personally and in turn making the mortgage payment on that building. I believe a possible solution would have been some sort of off-ramping that involved the landlord to help that tenant either transition into a tenant-based voucher directly from D.C. Housing or to transfer to housing that she could possibly afford. Instead of leaving me, a small business owner, kind of stuck with carrying the debt that I'll likely not be able to recoup. The third point is probably more of a comment. Once a year, the units go through an annual inspection. But I'd like to propose that in the requalification of the tenant, it was not just of their financial capabilities, but in assessing also whether or not they still qualify for the voucher as a whole. I've discovered tenants who've been arrested for drug and physical violent related events. And more frequently, I've discovered tenants who have in fact been married, therefore circumventing the program from the financial standpoint and including all income in those assessments that your office needs. So in closing, just I'm really grateful for the time, your ear, and possible consideration, my suggestions that I proposed here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Next, we have Tiara Peterson. Tiara Peterson.
Hello, hello all. Yes. Yeah, I just wanted to join here today because I'm a family support worker. I work closely with families in D.C. And ninety percent of our clients are D.C. Housing Authority voucher recipients. And they wanted me to come on here to, on their behalf, just to address some things. They would like to know, is there going to be new policy in place as far as the amount of time it takes for an emergency move? There are families who are going through emergency situations, especially with their private landlords, who who sort of neglect the duties of caring for these residents. These residents are, a lot of them have mental health issues. They're not cognitively capable in many ways. And so they come to these agencies for assistance. And we realize that a lot of these families are being mistreated due to them not being that educated in some areas. And it's pretty heartbreaking. So I just want to know what is, what type of support can House and offer for these families? The case managers unfortunately are extremely hard to access. I myself has assisted them with trying to contact their case managers. And it takes a very long time for them to reach them. There's a family right now in the middle of an emergency move, but they're they're having trouble with affording their utilities. And that's just, that's just an example. In addition to that, these families who are, you know, not very educated and may can't afford rent, which is great, and we really appreciate the opportunity to have this. This is a government mandated funding. However, these families cannot afford some of the other bills such as Pepco. Some of these families don't even know they have to pay other utilities because sometimes the voucher would change and they don't know that now their voucher doesn't cover Pepco. So we had over, maybe like five hundred or plus families over the summer who had been struggling to keep their lights on and living with no power. And these private agencies are losing funding because there's so, it's, it's a lot. They're losing funding because there's so many people in the community who are not able to afford living in D.C. in, with the voucher and not being able to sustain the Pepco and the gas and sometimes the water in some cases. So we just want to know what plans do we have in place for these families moving forward in the budget that can assist these special situations? And that is all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson.
Let me go back. I believe we have the trees back. Since she has technology, the trees belt, are you with us?
Yes, thank you. Trees Belt, I'm the chair of the Berry Farms Citizens and Allies. I want to know about the recovery plan because somebody explained it. It seems though I'm under public housing. Why didn't, I don't know if I missed the meeting or something. I didn't get any mailings or to like tell me about this recovery plan or, I don't know, and I'm worried about the residents in Berry Farms because we're all, you know, don't make these meetings or, I know I didn't get a mailing. Like, I think it should be a meeting, like breaking down this whole three-year recovery plan. And it just leans into like, we feel like the residents aren't being heard. It's always just like a listening session. We just go to the next person. I'm just really not understanding like all these, you know, whatever this recovery plan is and how it affects public housing residents, especially like Berry Farms residents specifically, because we're all moved around. We're being offered to come back to the senior building, but right now, because that's the only building that's up. But even seniors, some seniors, they don't want to go. They want to get into the house. And I know the house is like the third thing to be built because they want to, they built the senior building and then they're supposed to build a single-family home. Then they're supposed to build the houses. So I'm just really trying to understand this recovery plan and what's going on with like meetings to like meet with Berry Farm residents. I mean, it's not many. I don't know. We're everywhere. Like I said, I don't know how we can get a meeting together with the residents that are remaining that want, that do want to return. I spoke to a lot of people that do want to return. I know it's a lot that cannot return. Return. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bell.
Next, we have Andre.
Oh, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I got two quick questions and one suggestion. I've been on the Section Eight voucher list for two thousand. I have family members that work with the Housing Authority that I live with. I'm currently homeless and a returning citizen. And I've done majority of everything that the people that testified previously have done. I've done all of that stuff. I submitted my paperwork and they done my background and I got a letter stating that they need more information of me doing stuff to show that I'll be a good participant for the program, that I'm in the community doing good things. I sent thirty-six pages of certificates, letters from agencies, letters from community members showing that, hey, I'm a good advocate, I'm a good participant for the program. I called Housing Authority several times and I got a response back finally after months, almost over a year that I was denied the citizen's dial letter in May, never received it again. I live with a current employee of D.C. Housing Authority. I have family members that live and own all those properties, including those people that testified today. I know them personally. And he said, deny me, and they said a letter. They said they worked with Kentucky. And Kentucky said that they want to take the stance of housing, deny me. And I'm a paralegal, so I'm like, okay, I sent you guys thirty-six pages of something that left you no grounds of a denial. How can you deny me? We're going to reach out to you. Haven't got anything. So I requested a fair hearing and I CC'd the emails to every team member, including the global team email box. Received a letter about the voucher, in-house vouchers for properties. Submitted that paperwork for that. I'm trying to find out how, what programs or what are you guys doing to help people that are coming home from jails and people that are homeless? Because I've done everything. I haven't even contacted HUD. They sent me documentation of all those memos. They sent you guys. That's it with that paperwork of those thirty-six pages. And even a letter from Congress, Eleanor Holmes, Northern Office, she sent me a letter. So I wrote that, submitted all that stuff too. And I'm getting nowhere on this. And I'm trying to find out what is going on with the programs that are supposed to be designated to help people to overcome homelessness. Like, I live with a House Authority worker and I'm homeless. And there's no way I should have been on my list since twenty twenty-two thousand till it's twenty twenty-four and nowhere. Can somebody explain to me how, what the process is?
So, Mr. Hammond, we'll have somebody follow up with you and find out exactly what happened.
Okay, my second question is, my mom won a lawsuit against D.C. Housing Authority. We lived in the East Gate property and my mom had moved over to Woodland Terrace, which I lived and grew up with India Blocker, the testified person that was there earlier, I grew up with her. And the judgment was monitoring funds that was given granted to my mom. And the part of the judgment was also because of the specialist outbreak that we had at East Gate. And we were sick, we were affected by it, got really sick, that each one of her children at the age of eighteen supposedly got Section Eight vouchers designated to them individually. That's part of the judgment that I've seen, that I've read over the years and have seen today. And that's not been followed through. Is someone in the general counsel office can reach out to me to find out why hasn't that been done? And it was a corollary judgment for that to even happen?
Okay, Mr. Hammond, we will follow up with you on that one also.
Okay, and one last suggestion.
Quickly.
Okay, can I say my suggestion? The three minutes wasn't enough. I may have planned these questions accordingly. On the properties dealing with safety, a gun violence on the property. My car was shot up in Lincoln Heights property. I've known the police, I know the police officers that work for D.C. Housing Authority, I know all of them. And they're not out there doing their job. Is there a way for the participants of D.C. Housing Authority, there's some participants there, when you guys do a home inspection, my suggestion is they have laws that allow the officer, because they are, they are workers of D.C. Housing Authority, to go with the inspector on site with a K-9 dog. The Supreme Court ruled that a K-9 dog, even though he's an officer, does not have a soul. So the legal search procedure does not apply to the animal. Is there a way that when these people go on these inspections, that have an officer escort them that works for D.C. Housing Authority only, not M.P.D. So they can go in there, inspect property and do a safety check so we can get these guns out of the neighborhoods? Because the majority, eighty percent of the guns are in D.C. housing properties, period. Is you guys working on some type of thing that's going to be helped that way to make people safe, children safe? My mama's safe that lives in Greenleaf, safe, including myself going to visit, safe. Are you guys implementing anything of that nature? Safety on the properties?
I hear your suggestion, but we have to move on. Thank you so much. Our last participant for today is Diego Del Pallego. Can you guys see that you're on?
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Daniel Lepilogo. I work with Empower D.C. and we work public housing residents around the city. First, I want to start off with a kudos. I want to say I participated recently in the Langston Terrace Day. It was a great event, a lot of community building, a lot of folks not only enjoying themselves, but availing themselves of resources from different organizations around the city. So I thought it was a great event and glad to have participated in that. I want to follow up on some of the points a couple of residents have made. We recently met with public housing residents. We have a monthly meeting and we discussed the recovery plan. And the thing that stood out most to tenants was the change in subsidy. From what we heard, you know, tenants want to know really what is going to happen and they want to see that spelled out literally. Like what will change in their tenancy when their subsidy changes? So that was a very big thing, seeing it written down, what will happen, what will the process be? That would be really appreciated. The other big thing folks want to know is the financial impact. Will there be a financial impact? Will there be any added fees? Will they have to pay utilities, as we heard? Is practice in properties like The Strand, that is a very, very big thing weighing heavily on a lot of residents because that would be a financial burden and they need to figure out. because that would be a financial burden and they need to figure out how they would have to deal with that. If and when the subsidy changes. The other big thing tenants want to know is where are suggesting is that, you know, definitely needs to be a lot more tenant input. And these meetings that are held related to filing Section Eighteens for their properties. They need to be recorded, notes need to be taken and archived. I know there used to be a D C H A dot U S that was archiving video and meeting notes for, I know, at least the Melvo projects and some other projects. So we would like to see something like that. For tenants who aren't able to make the in-person meetings or even the virtual meetings as a way to be able to look and see what is happening and hearing what's going to happen. So that's going to be very big moving forward. We'd love to help support in, in those efforts with the tenants we work with and making more suggestions. The other big question that came out of this is that we know that the applications that are being filed are demolition disposition applications, although we understand that they are to make a subsidy change. The question did come up, are there plans for any demolitions? So I think that would need to be answered by the authority as they submit not only applications for approval from their board, but submit the actual applications to HUD. So, you know, I think in general, there needs to be a lot more work done to explain to D C H A tenants what this change in subsidy is going to mean for them on many levels, their rights, their tenancy, the financial impact, and of course, and most importantly really, is how they will be involved in voicing their concerns and how we can all work together to ensure that their rights are preserved and that this does not cause financial hardships for them moving forward. It's already a tough city to live in financially. So anymore would make it very difficult. Lastly, I just want to make a suggestion from sitting here and watching the meeting today. And it's something that always happens is oftentimes these do feel like just listening sessions when there's very little, if no response from board members. I think at least you all should, at the beginning of these meetings, explain the protocols of response to tenants, like what's going to happen, when they can expect a response? Because oftentimes people feel like their testimony is falling on deaf ears when there's no back and forth interaction. I realize that we don't want to sit here all day. But if tenants understand, have a better understanding of when they'll be responded to and how, perhaps we'll avoid some of the tension that occurred when folks are feeling like they're not being heard. Thank you and look forward to working cooperatively with the housing authority as these major changes happen for public housing residents.
Thank you, Daniel, for your testimony and thank you for being cooperative with us. Appreciate your advocacy and your always trying to hold us accountable. So I just want to mention a couple of things in terms of follow up. One is that for everyone who testifies, we are taking notes and the board gets at the end of each a follow up report, which from the staff, which goes down and each of the people who have testified and what the follow up was, you know, if someone had an issue with the culture or whatever, staff will contact them. They do a report that does come to the board. So we do know what happens and what the follow up is. With regard to the repositioning of our properties, as you know, there's, there are going to be lots and lots of meetings going forward as we properties. But I, for the benefit of all that were still on, I'd like to ask the director very briefly, talk a little about the, our commitment to move forward in terms of the resident, how the change will affect the residents.
So obviously the applications have been submitted. For HUD to get back to us. So we'll know whether that they were approved or not. The one we still not have gotten approved. But we will be engaged with the residents. We made that very clear. As a matter of fact, for the A N C meeting the other day, we put some written responses in place with regard to rest engagement to explain the process once we refer what we're going to do. Right now it's kind of really slippery because we don't know whether that we're going to actually do Section Eighteen, was it going to be a rare blend? So there are a lot of different questions that need to be answered before. But when we do go out to talk to the residents about how it's going to affect them and what's going to be implemented, we're clear on what we have, right? And that's the only thing about it. I know the people anxious. But this is going to take a while, number one. And so until we get anything back and know the clear direction of how we want to go, we'll be sort of speculating as to what, when, where and how. And I think that's part of the problem right now. I get it. People anxious when they see it and they think, oh, my God, you know, there's some things are going to change. Absolutely. But now, but how they change and when they change and what the change will be, we really won't know until we sit down, get the approvals and then we determine which properties are going to be affected by and how they're going to be affected by. And that's the only reason why we really haven't had a lot of engagement because there's a lot of speculation right now.
Okay, thank you. So that ends the testimony portion of the meeting. Thank everyone. Your patience and thank we're going to those who testified today. And as I said a minute ago, we do follow up with this. So now we're going to move on to committee reports and resident issues. So I'm going to start with Resident Services Committee, which is chaired by Denise Blackson, who is one of our residents.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The Resident Service Committee is deeply committed to enhancing the quality of life for our residents. I'm Commissioner Denise Blackson, a resident commissioner and the chair of the committee. Safety is my utmost concern. Those who are aware of my commitment to safety and a dedication that has been recognized with thorough community and boards. This is not about self-promotion, but rather a testament to my focus. I have launched an initiative called Block by Block, which aims to empower resident council leaders in communities and beyond. Block by Block emphasizes education, partnership, training, safety, employment opportunities, networking, and fostering relationships with community stakeholders. Designed with residents as the priority and the safety, as the priority in the community stakeholder. This is designed with residents in mind. I ensure continuous collaboration with the resident leadership team, the residents of our property, and the Office of Resident Services, which collaborates collaborates intimately with the residents. Sorry about that. As the Chair of the Resident Service Committee, I'm delighted to collaborate with Mr. Brian Hirsch, which is the Director of the D C H A Office of Resident Services, and Rashard Tyler, D C H A Client Relations and Customer Service Manager. I value the residents who lead the various properties also, and they are the fundamental reason for our work. A few months ago, the Resident Service Committee had a meeting where I had Lifeguard Digital Health as a presenter. It was an enlightened session. I relayed that this took place with the resident leaders and they wanted to have the same presentation. My initiative is progressing well and we had extended the invitation to the commissioners to join the session if possible. The residents were very attentive and demonstrated a keen interest in the services provided by Lifeguard Digital Health. Just want to share a little bit of information. Lifeguard Digital Health offers a monitoring device that serves individuals with drug addictions and medical emergencies. This device can be installed at a home or unit and is designed to alert a management office, relative, or friend. They offer various devices, including a wearable watch. As a community leader, I frequently encounter concerns from residents about neighbors who are being written, let alone, and this device acts as a safety mechanism. So I thought this would be a good way to start off the initiative, Block by Block, for one of the safety mechanisms. Okay. I would like to share some insight on the trainings we recently had by Block by Block. The leaders received training from various agencies, including a certification on Narcan. The resident leaders were highly impressed with that. We not only received the training and instructions, but we were also supplied with Narcan to curry with us. I anticipate the Resident Service Committee initiatives will create positive changes across the D C H A portfolio and community. That is just one aspect of the for the Block by Block training. Another aspect would deal with M P D, Chief Reese, and the D C H A staff. And I just wanted to share in working with the Office of Resident Services, I just wanted to shout out a few remarkable things that I know they have been working on, not only with us as resident leaders and helping me with my initiative. I wanted to just speak on, you know, they had the Commitment to Excellence Scholarship Event that was recently offering residents with GPA of two point oh or higher the chance to write an essay and apply for the scholarship. This program has been longstanding here at D C H A over twenty five years. And I would like to extend a long welcome to the new D C H A Youth Coordinator, Tyrone Spriggs, who I've had the pleasure of encountering at a couple of events. Also, I had the pleasure to attend the Office of Resident Services. I had the D C H A Apprenticeship Training Program known as A T P. And this is an excellent initiative. You might remember me and my fellow commissioner, Ms. Bird, Commissioner Bird, which mentioned this a while back when we attended an A T P event. On Friday, September the sixth, I had the pleasure of going there to see some of the potential graduates get measured for their professional suits. That moment was truly unforgettable and I had to get, I got a chance to interview some of the participants. And I just wanted to share that. I'm not going to read all of it, but I just wanted to say I appreciate working with the Office of Resident Services and D C H A and helping me with my initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Great report. Any questions?
I want to add to it.
You want to add to it?
Can I give Director Pettigrew, I just want to give him a response. That you deserve today. And leaders reaching out about the revitalizing, rebuilding your community and block party. You had I have been to maybe five or six out of the seven or eight of them. And I can attest that of engagement. The terrorists appear and be identified. Remember, as symptoms are happening in New York, Arlington, and Shakespeare, New York City, right now, memorial service underway at Ground Zero to mark twenty three years since nineteen for D C H A Employment Event. And that was very well organized. Good to see your workers relaxed and in a relaxed setting and really enjoying themselves. I think that's well deserved.
Just because I wasn't there.
Just want to give you your accolades.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. But wow, it's a team effort. Again, I can't speak enough about the staff in general. Changes that I'm seeing in them in terms how we should be treating our residents. And I'll remember when I first interviewed about being focused was take care of residents. Yeah. As much as I can, make residents feel important and special and try to get as many services as possible. I'll do anything else. So. Thank you.
Yes, hello. First, I would like to say to the public that you don't have to wait for these meetings to contact us. If you go to D C H dot org, you will see myself, Commissioner Blackson. So you can contact us and maybe we can help with the waiter, find some of these answers because here you're limited to three minutes. We are here for you. We are residents, so we understand. So please utilize us. And I wanted to say that so you can hold us accountable, we're responsible, and also for transparency. Likewise, I've been working with Brian Happ. Wonderful person. We're partnering with N C B A, which is the National Caucus of Center of Black Nation because I'm always talking about senior citizens. They have a program for participants that are fifty five plus that will help them, like myself, re-enter the job. Give us some training. It's an amazing program. Secondly, I want to say when I say me, y'all say we. I actually wanted to receive an award that I Commissioner. So I think this is a great thing for the N A R C A with Dr. Lou and everyone traveling there. Just to let his name. Okay, Director Pettigrew.
Give me your X. Wait a minute. Give me your X.
So grateful to you. I too see the difference. I'm living in one of the properties of Melvo. And I was, I came in, it was bright. They put up lights when I left. But they were doing so many things. When you live at, looks good, it makes you feel good and you act better. And I'm just great because this isn't just limited to D C H A. This is a community-based project. So even our neighbors are like, yo, I see y'all. I'd be like, we doing it. So thank you so much. And that's all I needed to say. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. So I guess that's the first time we've had an extensive report from Resident Services in a while. So I appreciate the work that you all have done as residents. And I'm glad to hear that things are getting better. As Mr. Pettigrew committed to doing when he first arrived, what, eleven months ago now?
Ten months. Seven years ago.
He said he was going to make things better and that his focus was always going to be on the residents. So I'm glad to hear that he's following through and
Appreciate him and his team. But send it out. First, I am your Block by Block.
That's a big turn off.
Okay, so let's move forward. We have a number of resolutions today and I'm going to try to get through this as efficiently as possible. So we have other committee reports and resolution to go through. So I'm going to, I'm going to take some of the resolutions out of turn in the interest of trying to expedite things. And then I'll come back to the committee report. But I'm going to start with Resolution twenty four dash thirty two, just to authorize execution contracts for temporary staff and services. See why? And the board has received background information in the board book. And so I'm not entertaining discussion at this time. Go ahead and ask Have someone to approve of Resolution twenty four dash thirty two. Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Very done. We'll go to a roll call vote on Resolution twenty four thirty two.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Reed? Commissioner Dickerson?
Yeah, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Blackson?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Silva?
Yes.
Thank you. And Chairperson Skinner?
Yes.
Resolution's approved.
Okay, thank you. Next, I'm going to take up Resolution twenty four dash thirty seven, just to approve of D C H A insurance policies. We have a number of different policies that different issues, aspect of the operations. And this is for approval for the various insurance policies for fiscal year twenty twenty five. And again, as the information in the packages is, I'm going to ask for Motion twenty four dash thirty seven.
Motion.
Second. Second.
Second.
Okay, we'll have roll call votes.
Commissioner Blackson?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris? Commissioner Harris, I saw that you unmuted, but we didn't hear your response.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Dickerson?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Silva?
Yes.
Chairperson Skinner?
Yes.
Resolutions approved.
Uh, next I'm going to go to the uh Operations Committee. Uh, and Operations and Administrative Services uh and Chair Katrina Jones is not with us today, so I'm going to ask Commissioner Silva uh to report out. And we have, I think, three resolutions of uh of that committee uh thirty, twenty forty. Twenty four forty and twenty four forty five.
Um, so this is about the resolution for um commercial office.
Office lease.
Commercial office lease. Um, I'm saying, as we had originally discussed, uh, the space in the downtown area in Chinatown is I, the ideal space for uh office space. And so I think most people in the committee were very pleased that we are moving in this direction. There were some questions. The D C Housing Authority staff answered all of them. We don't have time, so I think we, we should keep it moving. I think everybody is pleased with the location. Right? It's the most important piece of this. There were questions about like whether we had comparable pricing to like make sure that uh um, you know, that we're not overpaying for the space and all that good stuff. So um. Is that a question?
Yes. So um, I do have a question about space. That is the building that we're in here at three hundred seventh Street Southwest. Um. We, I thought we had uh an option to expand here and additional space within this building. Uh, and I just wanted to 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 find out what happened with that, why, why we have to go outside and at least another building as opposed to expanding where we are here.
Yes, I should either want to take that.
Yeah, I could take that. So we did have opportunity to expand, take the rest of the nine floor. Um, we missed that opportunity. And Wamada has decided to build upon that opportunity. But to be honest with you, that would not have fulfilled this need. Because this building has some restrictions. We wouldn't be able to have the customer engagement like we have at seven oh two. So honestly, that wouldn't have been a good option either way. So we honestly feel confident in the seven oh two H Street, uh, moving forward with that residential space.
So I think the next resolution is related to, oh, did you want to vote for that?
This one.
So. Warn me then. My end of the part.
Okay, so uh, I'm asking for uh Resolution twenty four dash thirty four. This is to authorize execution of investment to commercial office space or additional administrative office space. Can I get a motion?
Sure.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing done, I'll take a, we'll take a roll call vote. Resolution twenty four dash thirty four.
Perfect. Commissioner Harris? One more time, Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Thanks.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Ellen. Yeah, I said it. Mr. Seale already said, keep it moving.
Commissioner Silva?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickerson?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Blackson? And Chairperson Skinner?
Yes.
Perfect.
Okay, um, next we're going to go to Resolution twenty four dash forty, which is to authorize execution of execution of contract for healthcare initiative program for on-site primary healthcare.
So um, we are very excited that there is healthcare options offered at this particular location. We were very interested in determining or learning whether there were additional options um and other sites. But recognize that this particular resolution is about maintaining um a service that is currently available and that would not be available unless the Housing Authority um advances this resolution. So we are perfectly on board. Um, the director did indicate that um there is an opportunity to assess um the needs of residents and to think about like what other locations might deserve this kind of service in the future as well. So.
And so they're, they're, they're more than one location. So they're really add at Highland, right? In, in Abbotick too?
In Langston Terrace.
Like so.
And there's like a mobile. Yes, and that we were all very excited about. So everybody wants to advance this resolution.
So. Mr. Skinner, you, you sort of.
Yeah, I was saying, uh, when, when I toured Greenleaf last year, uh, I saw the on-site uh situation. And um, you know, I was really impressed. I guess there was a registered nurse who actually runs the program and had that site, at least at the Greenleaf site. Uh, and she provides various types of services the residents could just walk in and get those services. I'm really impressed with the operation. Glad they were going to continue and expanded. So that said, um, can I get a motion to approve Resolution twenty four dash forty, authorize execution of contracts for the healthcare?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Sure. Commissioner Silva, oh, sorry.
I did want to ask a question.
Yes, um, just curious with health care, I don't know how these work. Um, but are we able to cover anything through insurance or anything related to this contract? How does that work?
So the actual provider, they, if, if someone comes in and they have insurance, they can recoup it.
Okay.
So yes, they are attempting to do that and that's due to C three cares. But for us, we don't give a bone.
So how, that doesn't impact the A at all?
No, the, the cost that they were billing and receiving has no impact on the amount of funding that they were saying.
Oh.
Would lose to be able to fund this program, unfortunately. So they, they took in, when they did their numbers, they took in to consideration the billing.
And a lot of individuals come in and not bring Medicare or their Medicaid and or other insurance.
Okay.
So they did take that into consideration.
Thank you. Okay, uh, it's been moved in second. So we'll have a roll call vote.
Sure. Commissioner Silva?
Yep. Yes.
Commissioner Blackson?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Dickerson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Thank you. And Chairman Skinner?
Commissioner Reed, back.
Oh, I think I see. Oh, Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
I'm, I'm sorry. Commissioner Reed, this is for uh Resolution twenty four thirty, twenty four forty.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. And Chairman Skinner?
Yes.
Resolution is approved.
Okay, next we're going to move to Resolution twenty four dash forty five. This is to authorize contracts for maintenance or repair services.
Okay, we actually did have a lot of questions about this one, which ultimately resolved during the meeting, but I did want to report out uh that we were um, we were a little bit confused why there's an urgent needs campaign uh versus on-call maintenance and repair services um versus all of the redevelopment renovation work that is also underway, right? So it's very difficult to keep track of these different um options and why they are set up the way that they are. Um, Director Pettigrew and his team did a good job of helping us get our heads around the fact that um the urgent repairs is um uh different than this on-call maintenance, which is really to support residents that are calling in and needing repairs to their unit, which is slightly different than the urgent needs campaign, which is a more concerted program where you're going in, you're making assessments and you're making the repairs as needed. So that was at least my understanding.
Yes.
You did a good job.
Yep.
Okay. So ultimately, we were in support of advancing.
So uh, I guess my question is, we're hiring uh several contractors, everyone to typical maintenance or repair work. So uh, okay, so this is to complement or supplement existing staff, which we have maintenance staff in each of our buildings, right? So uh, obviously, it's not enough.
Not at all. Four voters. He checked the book with four voters, gone through. A lot of stuff's breaking. Um, and ironically, the attorney general re-banched us about it at our last meeting vote. The fact that four voters, numbers are rising fast again.
Okay, uh, so with that, uh, I'll entertain a motion to Resolution twenty four dash forty five, authorize contract for on-call maintenance or repair services. Second? Any other discussion or questions? Uh, then we'll take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Silva?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickerson?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackson? Chairman Skinner?
Yes.
Resolutions approved.
Hey, uh, thank you, Commissioner Silva. The uh, Operations and Administrative Committee. And next we're going to move to capital projects and uh, starting with Resolution twenty four dash thirty six. Uh, this is to authorize submission to the Council District of Columbia Agreement to enter into long-term subsidy contracts for projects supported by D H C D's F Y twenty two and F Y twenty four R S Ps, supportive variation of forty thousand. And Hammer, come on. So uh, Hammer, you're going to provide some background on this?
Yes, good afternoon. Uh, this was actually discussed in the Operations Committee. And this is the uh structure that we have now for any new local rent supplement program project-based uh commit. Is that D H C D is the lead agency that does the uh initial solicitation or the NOFA. Uh, once those projects are selected for any of the projects that are requesting local rent supplement program project-based funding that we would, once D H C D has made the commitment, then we bring it to the board so that we get authorization to then move forward with the contracting process. So we have four projects that are uh part of this resolution, quoting ninety seven. Uh, it'll be ninety seven units of L R S P that will be produced through, through these four projects.
So I, I have a question. First, any other, any questions from any of the other? So I just uh need a clarification. Um. As I read it, I thought it said that uh going forward with these uh projects that the L R S P funds will be first located in D H C D's budget and they won't be transferred to D C H A's budget until the projects are constructed and occupied and uh they're ready for those subsidies. Uh, is that, so that's different from the way it works now?
Yeah, so in uh previous years, the funding would be allocated to D C H A. And that's the, on the basis that we would make the commitments, but our spending wouldn't actually happen until the units come online, which, which led to D C H A have years and years of unspent money. So this is the, the new framework allows us to be able to, through the commitments that are made through D H C D in the stabilization period. And what I call stabilization is the first, the fiscal year when the projects first come online and then the full fiscal year after that we would draw the funds from D H C D. We have an M O U uh with them. And then after that stabilization period, then it would be added to our budget, like operating budget ongoing for the remainder of the uh contract.
Okay.
It's a, it's a, it's a way to have the money come to the, to, to D C H A when it's actually needed for expenditure, but still allow us to have the funding commitment to be able to enter into the contracts.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, hearing done, then I'll entertain a motion to Resolution twenty four dash thirty six. Motion.
I'm, I so move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, give me a roll call vote, twenty four dash thirty six.
Sure. Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Blackson?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Dickerson?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee?
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Silva?
Yes.
And Chairperson Skinner?
Yes.
Resolution is approved.
Okay, next we're going to move to Resolution twenty four dash forty, twenty four dash forty six. This is to authorize the acquisition of the partner, partner insurance, Vincent one and Vincent two projects. David to present this.
That guy.
So this, this is a, a really complicated uh resolution, a complicated project. Uh, so I'm going to ask David to simplify it for me. If you can.
Excellent. This resolution is uh authorizing the executive director to uh buy out the limited partners uh that were created. Partnerships that were created in nineteen, I mean, two thousand and two and two thousand and five to construct uh Hanson. The uh second part of the uh resolution is so that we could uh submit the, so we could follow through submission of financial plans and other documents for, for section eighteen, but work version of sixty six, sixty eight, a current public housing units into our head section eight. Nineteen ninety nine, this was the third uh Hope Six Award for D C H A. And between two thousand and two and two thousand and five, we transformed Frederick Douglass and Stanton dwellings into what is now Hanson one and Hanson two. Uh, Hanson one obtained uh hundred and twenty four total rental units and Vincent two uh had a hundred and fifty six rental units. In addition to that, there was three hundred and twenty four sale units uh in the community. It's a, it's quite successful community. Uh, tax credits are uh investors in, invest their equity dollars and receive the tax benefit for it. We build the housing and they expect to be uh taken out of the limited partnership in fifteen years. It's a fifteen-year tax credit compliance period. Both projects, Hanson one and Hanson two, that uh period has expired. We negotiated with the limited partners and bought out their interests. Uh, so then we could do this all over again to reinvest uh capital dollars into the property so that we can keep these properties going on for the next twenty years after.
I have a question. Uh, this is Jim Dickerson. I, the developer fee, the Housing Authority gets the developer fee out of this tax, out of the tax credits, correct?
We split our, we split it with our development partner, the board.
Split, split with your partner, okay. What's the split?
Fifty fifty. The board authorized this in a resolution back in twenty twenty three, January.
Yeah, I'm good, I'm good. Okay.
You told, make it short.
Commissioner, should we stand?
I know, right?
So I'm the one that has all the questions. I'm opening things up, okay. Um. So in terms of going forward, it's a split, 50-50 split with the DCHA or our subsidiary and Urban Atlantic. So in the previous iteration of partnership, there was another firm in Atlanta, so they are, we're buying them out.
Urban Atlantic is buying them out. Their share, ours is 50%. Urban Atlantic is taking care of that.
So they'll be going, it's just DCHA and Urban Atlantic. Okay. I guess the other question is somewhere in the background reading, there was some dollars that were supposed to come to DCHA as a result of, I guess, the repayment of the money that we made on these projects.
So the next time that we bring back to you, we'll be bringing back the financing plan. Financing plan has in there the amount of money that the Housing Authority will receive. It's 4.95 million dollars to buy out the limited parts that the Housing Authority received as proceeds from the recent indication of the property. The loan amount is in the area of 12.93 billion, but 12.5 million dollars is the Housing Authority received. The balance of the proceeds from this tax credit syndication will go into fees as well as capital. You'll receive that entire financing plan.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing done, can I get a motion to approve Resolution 24-46, authorize acquisition of limited partner interest in Vincent 1 and Vincent 2?
Motion.
Second?
Commissioner Sella?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickerson?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackson?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
And Chair President Skinner?
Yes.
Resolutions approved.
Okay, next, we're going to go. Budget and Finance Committee chaired by Commissioner Reed, and this is probably the most important item on the agenda, which is we took the FY25 fiscal year budget for the Housing Authority so that we can. Commissioner Reed, turn it over.
Thank you, Chair, and I will be turning it over to the Director and our CFO in just a minute, but I just wanted to say that the committee met last week to discuss the proposed budget put forward by the agency for fiscal year 2025. We are recommending that the board approve the budget that you see today. We spent a good amount of time with the CFO and the Director and his team walking through just some of the changes that we'll see in this upcoming budget, and I'll have them talk a little bit more about that, as well as how we'll be able to see progress in the roadmap that the Director laid out through this budget. And then one thing I'm very excited about is the CFO's idea to have a public budget document for us, for, I think, one of the first times, that will be available on our website, be written in plain language, so that our residents and our stakeholders can start to understand our budget and our budget process and become involved and engaged. And then also, just thanks to Heather and the Director and their teams for working so hard to prepare this. As you all know, as we've talked about in so many meetings on our audits, Heather and her team have just been working nonstop to try to get all of our data in the right place, in good shape, and so it was a lot of work to prepare the budget for this year. And so we think that this will be a much easier process going forward. The last thing I'll say is that we also thank them for preparing, I know you all are seeing the summary today, there's quite a lot of detail behind the summary you see, including for the first time, we were able to see property by property budgets, which will help the agency really look at each property and sort of diagnose, what does it need, how do we make improvements, how do we sort of check in on its progress? And so that is just something that we've been asking for as a board for a long time, and we finally have them, so we're very pleased with that. So let me turn it over to you, Director, I know you and Heather would like to speak on this as well.
Oh, thank you, Commissioner. I'm going to turn it over to Heather. All I want to add was that I want to say, I'm a very person with Heather and her team, the last 11 months that our world went with regard to trying to get our finances in order, whether it be the three audits that we got done in five months, as well as preparing now for another audit, in addition to putting this budget together in a way that we believe would take the agency forward with the vision that we have. You exactly right, the property by property of finance and budgets are extremely important for us as an operation and as any kind of management company, so we're excited about that, as well as the transparency posted on the website. So I'm extremely happy and pleased where we are. Got a lot of work to do, but still, it's been a Yoma's job, and I just wanted to acknowledge Heather and her team with that. Heather, I'll turn it over.
Switch to David. So I'm kind of soft spoken, so I wanted to be sure everybody heard me. So thank you, and thank you, Commissioner Reed, for the support, the kind words. So as you know, back in August, we had a training where we went back to the basics to prepare the board for what you receive today. As Commissioner Reed stated, we have one massive spreadsheet that we've been working on for months with 60 funds, if you will, includes properties and departments, and what you have before you is the summary of all that. So if any commissioner, you know, would like to see any of that in your spare time, you know how to find me and the Director. But you know, this is a new leadership team, this is our first year truly with the budget where we can start to finish. We've calmed through everything. We had, you know, as the Director Pettigrew stated, we've essentially been in the years 21, 22, 23, and 24 in five months, basically. So this was very challenging, but we do feel positive about what we could contribute for this budget. It's pretty much in line with similar years' numbers. We did add sparkly overlook in the red budgets for Columbia in Colorado that was not a part of the budget last year. The red budget is a requirement by HUD to have that approved by the board, so those figures are in this total consolidated report that you have. We did increase tenant services because, you know, we've heard the feedback, we want to continue with the block parties, tenant initiatives, resident programs, and, you know, even do more than what we've done in the past, and so you'll see an increase there. We've also want to make sure our employees are taken care of and an increase in salaries as the Director will begin to start with wage negotiations and COLA increases and all that good stuff. So we made sure that was in there. Our budget supports our recovery plan by focusing on repositioning and preserving the existing public housing portfolio and being able to assess each property's needs, and we'll be able to leverage funds to support the new affordable housing. And so we will be monitoring every property, every department. We've already had talks with our internal budget team that I have of two members, and they're going to start, you know, we're creating new procedures for them this year. We're going to be meeting with every department, area managers, whoever PMO assigns us to look at all the properties, really start getting metrics for the Finance Committee and the Board of Commissioners. We did beef up training as well to be in line with the recovery plan, and that includes having a fully trained staff that provides quality customer service to our residents and outside stakeholders, so we made sure we had a nice little cushion for that. And so today, we're proposing the board approve the DCHA operating budget for FY25 with an overall operating budget of $671,251,866.
Questions?
Questions?
I can't go without.
I'm no longer taking your direction.
I see a small item down at the bottom.
Yes, sir. Exactly.
Not setting us our replacement.
So we caught all that up a couple months ago. Yes. Yes.
That's, as we move forward, that's going to get a lot bigger.
Yes. Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions? With that, I'll entertain a motion to 24-47. Operation budget for FY25.
Motion. Second. Commissioner Dickerson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Sella?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackson?
Yes.
And Chair President Skinner?
Yes.
Resolutions approved.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, Commissioner. Are you done with your report? That was enough, right?
That was, that was our entire meeting, was the budget, so there was nothing else.
Okay, thank you so much, and thank all of you online, and thank the board for sticking with us today as we get through this. I just want to say one more thing, someone asked earlier about the Starboard, and if the mayor was going to, so just so you know, a Starboard, as you may recall, was put in place for two years, so the Starboard literally goes away at the end of December, December 25, which means that the mayor and council have to get together and propose a successive report, what's going to happen after December 2025. So the council will meet at the next week, and so we'll be working with the mayor and council to come up with a plan for governance point forward, beginning in January, for the Housing Authority. So stay tuned, let you know how that plays out, and of course, you can follow it as it goes. There will be a legislation to go through, the district council will be able to follow that process as it plays out. Okay, at this time, I'm going to recommend that to close this meeting pursuant to DC Code 2-575B or A, to consult with our attorney and to obtain legal advice and to preserve attorney-client privilege between our attorney and this body. Is there any discussion by the board on closing the meeting at this time? I just didn't want to do Commissioners' time, when we come back there, there's one thing that I just wanted to bring up, I'm sorry, something I want to mention. It'll be very brief. Okay, all right, put it in the executive session, and we'll do. Okay, thank you. Very brief, I just wanted to thank the Executive Director and the head of Resident Services, Brian Harris, and everyone that's part of the apprenticeship training program. I did go to their event last week, and I just didn't want this meeting to go by without saying how pleased I was and everything that I saw. The members of the program, the participants were very excited and really moved by their opportunity to participate in this program. It's really a life.
How are you feeling?
I'm pretty good. Let me call to publicly just really say I'm really proud of what's happening with that program and the, those who are participating. I really believe it's life-changing. They talked about how it's impacted them, how they've learned and how they're growing, and from my understanding, a lot of them at the end of the program, most of them get jobs, some of them get jobs here, here, and I think that's such an important thing that the team is doing, so I wanted to, wanted to publicly state that, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. For Brian and me, and I'll take it over.
Can I give more accolades to Brian and his team? Really grateful for Fashad, and I'm blanking on his last name. Tyler. They pinpointed dates for doing additional engagements relative to supports from DBH to help prevent fatal and near fatal overdoses, and so just we identified the five properties that we need to target based on the number of overdoses, and we've tentatively scheduled those for the end of September, found two dates, and then identified two engagement opportunities. So just really grateful to your team for their collaboration, cooperation.
The S's we went back there, let me look at my notes. Sorry.
Love residents ourselves.
I just want to share, to piggyback on the other commissioner about the apprenticeship training program, and one of the residents, one of the participants shared that, I spoke with Roberto, he expressed his love for the program, he is excited to be graduating, and he said he's honestly surprised that he made it this far, you know, and his expertise lies in carpentry and electrical work, and I just wanted to share that he stated that he don't know where he would be without that program. Okay, that's it.
Continue that program.
Yes.
So again, I'm going to recommend the board to close this meeting. 2575B. Was there any discussion by the board on closing the meeting at this time? Hearing done, I'll entertain a motion to close this portion. Second, we'll have a roll call to go into the second session.
Commissioner Blackson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Sella?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickerson? Commissioner Dickerson, you're going to have to take yourself off of mute, star six or unmute. I'm going to, and Chairman Skinner?
Yes.
The session is now closed.
Okay, can I ask all of those who are online to follow up with the executive session? Okay, welcome back. We are reconvening the District of Columbia Housing Authority Board of Commissioners meeting on September 11, 2024. The time is now 4:34 PM. Is there any other business to come before the board today? If there's no other business, then I'd like to announce that the next Board of Commissioners meeting, held on Wednesday, October 9, 2024, at 1:00 PM via WebEx. Information regarding viewing or participating in the meeting live can be found at our website, www.dchousing.org. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Second? Second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned at 4:35 PM. Thank you.
Thank you.